Mike.
Here.
John.
Here.
Kevin.
Here.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Need a motion for the consent agenda. Motion go second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Publican, but this is time please. The discussion items now written on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each.
I have something.
Okay.
Um, I thought we were going to talk about the insurance money towards the, toward the stabilization of the barns this, on this council agenda, but apparently it didn't make it to the agenda.
I'm still going through all the documents and I hope to have it on the next one.
Okay, just wondering, thanks.
No problem. Everybody else? Alright, and I've got an employee appreciation for a couple of employees. One of them is Barb Danger, if I don't think.
Danger, Barb Danger.
She's, she's been with the library right.
She's been with library almost as long as I have, yes. But she could not make it tonight, I'm sorry.
I've got dates on here. Anyway, Amy, would you go up here?
Yeah.
Barb, Barb's been on there for thirty-one years of service from April of ninety-two to December of twenty-three. Amy has been there for thirty-four and a half years.
Yeah.
September of eighty-nine till February this year. And I would just like to give you.
Oh, thank you. What, what did you say?
You can if you want, I'll be right here for you.
I always want to say stuff.
That's enough.
Thanks.
That'd be before you put the legs in the paper, get up.
Thanks for all your support through the years. And I would put, was in support of libraries next to any city in Iowa. And I'm not working for the city anymore, so I can say this. There's some bills in Iowa Senate and House that would take the controlled libraries away from volunteer library boards and give them to city councils. And I am very much opposed to these bills because I feel like the example that we have of library boards working with city councils is an incredibly strong example of people working for other people in a community and being in charge of their library. I also, I can't imagine a better situation, but I am very lucky to have a great city council. The city council is also lucky to have a really great, hardworking library board. And my feeling is that that control should stay with the library board. With all that the city council does, I don't know if anyone has asked you if you really want to be in charge of storytimes or other book selection that happens in the library or programming or all the different things that the library board takes care of. But I just wanted to put that out there mostly as a thank you for being so willing to work with the library board with me. I know councils and boards have changed in the thirty-four and a half years that I have been there, but we've not had any significant issues. And that goes for all the city departments working well together to take care of what we have. But I just want everyone in Lisbon to know that they have something wonderful. I want them to appreciate this and I want them to work hard to keep that library where it is and what it is. And I know our new director, Elizabeth Hoover de Gualvez, is going to do a great job working with all of you and is very much looking forward to that opportunity. So thank you for giving her that opportunity to do that. It's very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Shall I take the time? Do you want to? Should I take her?
Oh! I just want to introduce our new library director. This is Elizabeth Hoover de Gualvez. I am thrilled and I hope that you are too to welcome her to the Lisbon library. I know she will take as good care of it as I have, and she's required to stay at least thirty-five years in order to be me on the record. So thanks for coming, thanks so much. So yeah, you missed the plaque, but that's okay. We still get to.
Welcome.
Thank you, I'm sorry I came in two minutes late.
You're very, you gotta be on time.
Yes.
Thank you so much, thanks everybody.
Well, we're proud of our library.
Thank you.
As a Lisbon citizen, I don't know that everybody tells you that, but there's a, there's a pride for that library and certainly the upstairs also.
Absolutely, it couldn't have happened in every community and so we should be very, very proud of it and work our duty good.
That's one of my favorite things to do, to take somebody upstairs and in the library that has never been here before.
That was my favorite part about Elizabeth's first day because she had not been in here to talk. I took her up there and she just went nuts. She really, she really thought it was amazing and she's really, I know she's looking forward to, to all the.
It used to be full of drug tires upstairs.
And Christmas, old Christmas decorations.
And old Christmas decorations.
It was really happy.
Did that where the shop, put all her stuff? Yep.
There was a storage room. Not anymore.
And then somebody asked me, what are you going to do with all that writing on the walls?
Did someone ask that?
Save it.
Glad we didn't scrub it off.
Precious. Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you. Thanks.
Twenty twenty-three CLG annual report presented by the ALHPC.
Thank you, Doug.
How are you guys?
How you doing?
Good. This is the summary that we need to give you each year for our annual report that we send to the state. And so I'll just go right into it. With ties to the state and federal government, our commissions have been different than other boards of commissions in Lisbon. The Lisbon City Council entered into agreement with the National Park Service and the State of Iowa to become a certified local government thirty-two years ago, creating the Lisbon Historic Preservation Commission and committing to supporting local preservation efforts. CLGs are required to submit an annual report to the state and required to give a summary of its annual report to the city council at public meeting. You received a copy of the report in your packet, so I'll skip the details and provide you with the highlights of our work for this last year. First of all, we track our volunteer hours in the event those hours can be used for a grant match. And last year we logged in six hundred and forty-five hours working on behalf of the city of Lisbon. Our work is guided by goals and action plans set annually by our commission. Last year we accomplished nearly all of what we set out to do, including the following. We continue to work with the city on the rehabilitation of the west wall of the Lisbon History Center. As everyone remembers, grant funds covered about forty percent of those costs. We worked with the city on the rehabilitation of the Lisbon Public Library Building and grants covered about thirty percent of those costs. And we continue to serve as a consultant to the city in the administration of the downtown reinvestment grant program. And four grants were approved for Main Street buildings last year. We hosted a walking tour of the Main Street Historic District during Sower Crow days and assisted the History Center of Cedar Rapids with a Bite of History Dinner event at Glenn's in September. And these programs showcase our town's history and bring visitors to our community. We celebrate National Historic Preservation Month with a special activity for the third grade classes at the Lisbon schools. A guest article on the sun and a city proclamation of National Historic Preservation Month. Last year marked the thirteenth year of our collaboration with the school in the third grade. We've collaborated with organizations to purchase and install a new Lincoln Highway interpretive panel on Lincoln Square Park with a dedication ceremony held in October. Purchased and installed historic district signs on the lamp posts to designate the boundaries of the Lisbon Main Street Historic District. We worked with other organizations to apply for emerging partner status with the Silos and Smokestacks National Heritage Area for the Pleasant Grove Heritage Park and began planning for the development of the park after emerging partner status was awarded in August. We completed our first oral history interview in collaboration with the Grout Museum's Iowa Voices Project. The Grout Museum's located in Waterloo. Secured funding to cover the cost of a contract with OPM Architects, architects easy for me to say, to produce preservation plans for the agricultural structures in the Myers-Paw Historic District. These plans will serve as a tool for establishing priorities, preparing a timeline for completing the work, soliciting bids and securing grant and private funding. As required by all CLGs, we advocate for preservation and educate others on our purpose. We have done this by expanding our website and our social media presence and partnering with organizations at the local, county, and regional level. You received a copy of our goals and action plans for twenty twenty-four to let you know what we have planned for this next year. While we sometimes must react to whatever is in front of us, planning for the future is where we focus our primary efforts. This is especially true of our efforts to secure grant funding for our projects, which allows us to be, be involved and take advantage of the many grant opportunities that will allow us to improve our community without overburdening the taxpayers. In recent years, over ninety-six thousand dollars in grant funding has been supported preservation projects. I'd like to add that the work of our commission was recently acknowledged in an article on Silos and Smokestacks that was published in the Alliance Review. The publication of the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions distributed across the nation to Historic Preservation Commissions, state Historic Preservation Offices, and local, regional, and national nonprofits. So that is our report to let you know what we were up to last year and we'll see you again next year with the same kind of report.
Becky, how many, how many people do you have on your board?
Five. Last year we only had four, but we've, we've filled that void now. So do the math, six hundred and forty-five hours, two, five people. Anything else? Any question?
No, I think you guys are doing a great job and I mean, and it, you know, it's sound, I mean, you know, we're, our support is at a hundred percent, but I mean, it's just, you know, nothing, nothing is free. I mean, that, that's what sucks about some things, you know, and where we want to do, where we want to preserve something, but we want to do something else. I mean, it's just, you know, do we do this? Do we do that? I mean, so, I mean, I, I know at times you guys probably feel that we are looking at you that, you know, we don't want to support this, but we do support you guys one hundred percent. I want you to know that.
I realize that and I realize a budget's a budget. You know, we're, you know, we just try to look into the future and what some of this can, what some of this can do for the economics of the town and that sort of thing too. And so, you know, we just keep looking out further ahead and just try to, try to see what we can get done. And I know you guys are too. And we, you know, we appreciate, cause I, you know, I see you put effort into trying to help us figure out how to make things happen.
Becky, anything for Becky?
You put the good word.
Thank you, Becky.
Thanks, you guys.
Discussion about action and reference to city hall side.
Alright, it's on your packet. Same information that we presented during the budget talks. This is a signed proposal for your records. This would go in sometime this summer and be paid out in next budget year out of lost funds. So Brett and Logan are here tonight if you have any questions or comments about the sign. I know we kind of discussed it pretty good length last time and yet I can answer most of your questions, but I thought they could come and see any more for them specifically.
So everything that's like put on this sign will be done by Christina or Marcia or whatever?
Yep.
They'll be the illustrators that have access to the questions.
I have one question. Is this, is this the same system that was used when the school has a sign that would do wording going across and they had real problems with it? Is this a new system?
Completely new.
It's, it's completely different, Becky.
Oh, great.
And I think, isn't this like, people that designed this, don't they do like most everyone's? I mean, it's coming from.
Decronics.
How many messages was, do you recall how many like stored messages are different? I don't know, it was like more than you ever.
Yeah, it was more than you can imagine. Yeah. The ones in the school was very limited on how much it could hold in its, in its programming. So when they tried to overload really, they put too much on it and it just didn't work very well, so. But this, it's all new technology and every year it's changing.
Well, you know, like I said last, last meeting, every time you go through a town and you see something like on the bank or something, you always read it. It doesn't matter what town you're in, you always read it. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea and. What do you guys want to do?
We've been talking about this for over ten years. It's expensive, I know, but it's not getting any cheaper, so I'll move to approve.
The total cost of forty-four nine oh five?
That one, that one right there is what Stan would pay for theirs, so we're getting a price comparison.
I'll second a motion to approve the purchase of this.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
What's lead time on that now?
I don't think it's that bad right now. I mean, it could be, what'd you say? Tomorrow. We can start moving rocks.
No, but it's, it's reasonable.
Yeah.
I told them it'll probably be end of spring, first of summer, because we have for the next budget year to get the funding for that, so.
Alright, discussion about action and reference to change order number one for sports complex.
Lisa from YTT is here. This is the one and only change order. Basically it's about quantities and a couple greens that we put in along Third Avenue in the residence that was holding some water in their yard, so. I don't know if you have anything else?
Just a little bit of extra paving we ended up doing, just adjusting, adjusting some quantities for asphalt construction. It's in that total over twenty-five thousand, so it's a pretty simple change order. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions?
No.
Motion to approve the change order.
Your motion go second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion about action and reference to phase one payout five for sports complex.
So this is the next, pretty close to the final payment for Dave Schmidt. Lisa again is here to go with that.
Yep, this is our fifth payment for this one. It's pretty much our final. We have some grading volumes that we're discussing with the contractor as to what they actually order, so we might have some additional grading. We have a punch list to finish and then we'll have like a final retainage release, so we'll get our final invoice. So those are the remaining items on this phase of the project. We have like sixty-six, sixty-six thousand retainage to release on the next one. So this is just like pretty much our last payout. This payout covers everything we just talked about or was covered in that change order, so this kind of finalizes everything.
One thing to note, you see in my notes, after this was submitted, they owe us a credit of twelve thousand ninety-two dollars, but how they submit these payouts, it's very time consuming to do that. We have sixty-six thousand and change left in retainage and Lisa has the paper trail, so they've agreed to deduct that twelve from their retainage once we deem the project complete. I think it's thirty days after they get the retainage minus this twelve thousand, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the payment, number five now.
Your motion go second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Discussion about action and reference to purchase a new fire truck from Lexus.
Alright, so again, this was talked about at length. I did reach out to Maggie Berger from Spear Financial, that's our financial company that we use. Just talked about the different ideas of bonding and all that. Christine and I both talked to her. She suggests right now for what we're doing, at least paying the chassis, which is going to be due in twelve to eighteen months out of lost funds. You see in this packet, which is, it was a separate PDF because it's very large. Two ninety-nine, three eighty-one, so two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars would be the cost of the chassis payment. And that's going to be, need to be paid ten days from invoicing after they receive it. Again, it's a twelve to eighteen month receiving period. We did on that second page, page two of fifty-five, if you look at that, we did get the language in there. We talked about, if you remember last time, we talked about the motor and we wanted to make sure that we weren't the guinea pig for the new motor and we wanted to make sure we had the old one. So the language is in there, in the event the proposed Cummings L nine four fifty engine is not available upon construction of the chassis, the Lisbon Fire Department has the option to cancel the contract, deem the contract, no invoice. So this gives us an out if for whatever reason we can't get that. And then the total price of the truck would be six forty-nine oh ninety-one and that would be due on completion of the truck. I believe that was six months, Greg, is it six months after the chassis received or?
We're saying eighteen months after contract signing, so roughly five hundred and fifty calendar days. We'd ask, lately, right now the crystal ball's a cloudy.
Yeah.
We're running, I'll be honest with you, we're running three to six months behind. So with that being said, you'd be looking up to two years for final delivery.
Right. So then the final payment would be due at that time. So we can figure out after making the chassis payment, there is a hundred thousand in trucks set aside. So it'd be two hundred thousand out of lost to pay the chassis and then we can continue to watch the interest rates, continue to talk to Maggie, and then go about how we want to do the final payment.
How much is this truck total?
It's on page one, six forty-nine oh nine one. And that, that's pretty much bare bones. There, there were several optional items and I believe how we're going to handle that is the fire department's going to do the fundraising for those additional items. Danny, twenty-five thousand roughly?
Yeah, and I would say the absolute most, things that we actually need is going to be right around twelve, then the absolute wants would be about seventeen thousand dollars for the staff, somewhere in there, so.
So the association's going to fundraise for, for that stuff?
But keep in mind, we, we'll also have to fundraise all the equipment for the truck since we're not taking another pump around the surface, so we're going to have to buy all the hoes and so that probably going to be another twenty thousand dollars, but so.
Greg Landon is here from Lexus Fire. If you have any questions for him, I know we kind of talked pretty much at length at this, the last couple meetings, so. Ask if you have any questions you have.
When do, when do you have paperwork so we can sign it for a contract?
It's right here, that's, that's what's in your email or your, the attachment. Do you have any questions?
So how long is that truck good for then?
Well, we have two right now. Is it oh four, oh five?
We have, right now our current twin bumpers are oh five or Lexus bumpers are oh six. And when we have them pump tested, Trent from Martel does it. And he says the Lexus truck just smokes everybody else's truck. It's the best running truck in East Carolina. So we have no intentions of getting rid of that truck and that's why we're going with the Lexus again because of that reason, so.
So I think what Mike's asking, like, once we get that truck, how long is that truck good for?
Twenty years, right?
NFPA, I'm sorry, NFPA says twenty years and that's just the recommendation. They say twenty years, either refurb it to today's standards or put it in reserve.
And the thought of this is, the original Lexus truck is just a pumper. The pumper we had from West Branch is a pumper rescue and this will be a pumper tanker. So they're doing multiple, multiple things. So this should extend the life of everything that we have and, I mean, I.
This, this is going to replace four oh four?
No, probably eventually replace four hundred and four oh one eventually, the rescue. Cause then we'll have a pumper rescue, a pumper tanker, a pumper, and then we'll still have our grass ready and the.
We, we'd like to keep the old tanker as long as possible, you know, as long as it's.
We ran out of room in the station.
Well. It's pretty nice to roll out of here with that much water to a little fire. Oh, yeah. You know.
Been there, done that.
Yeah.
It is on you. Sorry, I said.
You're asking for approval to continue.
To purchase it.
I'd make the motion.
Motion to purchase a new fire truck from Lexus.
I'll second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You want to jump back to the second? How was that?
Resolutional for twenty, twenty-four fund transfers. Christine, you want to?
Okay, so this one is, this, one of the transfers is the local option sales tax to the roads department for the end loader. It was just a transfer that was missed and we found it during our current budget period that we're in right now, so I just need to make that adjustment for them. And then the TIF to downtown reinvestment, that was the one that we just approved last week, the D and D Body Shop, so we just have to move the funds since we've made a payment out of the downtown reinvestment account.
Motion to approve the fund transfer.
Your motion go second.
Second.
Nate.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Publican for budget amendment number two, fiscal year twenty-four. Motion to go to publican.
Motion to go to publican.
Your motion go second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, as you can see, the, the information up top, if you go down to the explanation of changes, hopefully everyone was able to view that. That kind of goes over everything, the purpose of that. Keep in mind, like the Watermain, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, when we did this budget, keep in mind that was a year ago and it's really eighteen months out ahead of the end of the budget year, so it's hard to forecast that stuff, where you're going to spend and all that, so. You can see expenditures, capital projects of Watermain, public works, twenty thousand for salary and benefits under that category and that's for that new position that we created. Twelve thousand five hundred for a change order for the sidewalk out front here and then the sixty-five hundred dollar street sign that came, we also have that as a revenue through the insurance for the damage from the storm. Culture and Recreation, we had a expenditure in revenue of six thousand dollars for the Historic Preservation Grant that was received. Thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars to rebuild the park pavilion and then ten thousand in employee benefits under Culture and Recreation for the new position that we hired. General Government, again, chunk of the city hall sidewalks came out of this, employee benefit higher, and then a hundred and one thousand dollars for the storm damages. then a hundred and one thousand dollars for the storm damages that are getting reimbursed through insurance. I'll be able to show that each way. Business type, twenty-three, two hundred for water and twenty, nineteen thousand for sewer for the new hire. So you can see those are split out under different categories. That's pretty consistent across the board with all the public works employees. And then you can see the revenues down below that I've already mentioned, one twenty-one, two twelve for insurance claims, six thousand for the grant, and then sixty-five hundred for the insurance money for the street signs. That's it. Do we have any questions?
And the motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution oh five, twenty twenty-four, approving budget amendment number two for fiscal year twenty-four.
Motion to approve budget amendment?
The motion is second.
Second.
Second, John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Resolution oh six, twenty twenty-four, approving agreement with Southeast, Southeast Lynn Community Center for Janitorial Services. Uh, I'm sorry. Christina, you want to go with it?
So I have been talking to Southeast Lynn and to the library with all the changes going on, and Southeast Lynn had decided to hire a cleaning person the same time as the library has also been looking for a cleaning person. So we came up with the collaboration of hiring one person to do both facilities, and then that person would actually be paid through Southeast Lynn, so we would be paying them a percentage or an amount each year that would be comparable to what the current cleaning position is making at the library. This person has been hired, the library board has, has approved it and spoken about it, and Nicole has handled it at Southeast Lynn, so we would be currently paying eight hundred and five dollars and nine cents for February through June, and then starting July first, we will set, uh, we will pay Southeast Lynn one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven sixty-five for a full year of janitorial services for the library. And then they'll handle everything from there, payroll and all that done.
Do we have our?
Our cleaning person was not interested in taking it on, but we did ask them.
But we have a regular one now?
Yeah, we have one here, yeah.
Over here.
The library currently has one, but they, they want to stop, so.
Any more?
Well, before we had to have them as a city employee, that's no longer required.
We would be changing this to like a twenty-eighty agreement contract services, otherwise. If they were at the library as an employee, then yes, but they will technically be an employee of Southeast Lynn, and we don't deal with any of their payroll.
So work is compensated, we don't get?
Yes, they're covering all that, and they had asked that it'd be in this amount that we're covering by, uh, for them, so.
Who to approve?
A motion to approve is second.
I'll second.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Of course, John is-
Um, I just put in the packet, uh, Senator Bonetta from the Bureau of EMS was here, did our biennial inspection, and it's just the report there, so everything looked good, and we are resurfaced.
Of course, city engineer.
Just a couple of things. We have a few projects that are bidding in the area for Millen overlay, one in Cedar County on Los Angeles, south of by eighty. That's about three and a half miles, and one on American Legion Road near Iowa City in Johnson County, that's about four point four miles. Both those bid on February twentieth. That should give us a pretty good idea of competition and price for Millen overlay. And once we take a look at those numbers, we should be able to determine whether or not it's going to be worth our while to try to get that back out to bid. And then the other thing that I have is the water, uh, water plant, water filtration that we're looking at, about as well five. Been looking at some options, traveled some information on one option, we're trying to gather information on another. The first one is an aerator system, which is a baggage treatment plant. It's pretty compact. The other is the traditional pressure filters, and I'm still waiting for that information so we can make a recommendation. So that's what I have for this evening. Anybody have any questions?
Question for Dave?
I don't know. Not a lot. Just update beyond during the construction of the water main, a compaction, we have some settling that we knew we were going to have. The contractor came out, put cones and caution tape up around it. As soon as the weather breaks, we're going to get out there and get there, get them filled, so we're working on that. We've got the walls up in the park building at the sports complex for the interior, so hopefully we can get the tin ordered and the plumbing and everything finished here in the next couple weeks out there, and that concession stand will be up and going, our pavilion. And then we're, we have been working on sod where we pushed snow, and we got hit with those two storms back to back. We pushed out, the ground obviously wasn't frozen. We did catch the edge places. We are going around currently, currently, and at least trying to put sod back where it was, and we will address it once the weather breaks with that, too, so. And last is, we're going to start trimming trees hopefully middle to later this week, so we'll be going around and working on that stuff.
Question for Travis? Question for Rick?
Just a couple things. Boys basketball, I got two weeks left. Everything's gone really well. We will go into spring soccer with all-star registrations next week. And then I've been looking for a turf management class for a few years now. I found one, Sports Field Management Association, so I actually completed that today, so I got my certificate, so that'll be good for existing parks and obviously our new big project that we're working on now, so.
Question for Doug?
Congratulations.
Please, Bernard?
Nothing beyond what's in the report. Unless you got questions.
Question for Doug? Ambush? Not for tonight, fire chief.
Uh, the only thing is, you guys kind of approved it at the appointments, but Jeff Silver, I want to thank him for being medical officer for the last, I want to say, ten years. Amber Purpleshimer's going to be taking over for him, and very gone over that transition and getting everything in line for that. So I just want to thank him for all his work. He's still going to stay on as a member, but no longer doing the medical, so. That's it. Oh, there's, uh, our St. Patrick's Day dance is out at Tin Roof on March sixteenth from eight PM to midnight, free will donation at the door.
Fire chief? City manager?
Travis and Dave touched on a lot of what I have. Just as a reminder, for everybody to come in and get their golf cart permits, as the weather turns, there's going to be wanting to get that out, so make sure that those are up to date. I met with the contractor and Allied Glass. They're hoping to have the frames built for the windows out here at City Hall and be on site sometime around the first of March, so look for that, which will hopefully be a good time, too. It won't be as cold, and maybe we can save some funding on the wall if it's a nice day, but, um, so that's going to be kind of a mess once they start. Met, uh, here at City Hall with YTT and Lisa, along with Greg and Travis and Keith. We're going to do everything we can to hopefully install the water service line, the sewer service line, and the storm sewer in the next phase in-house, which should save some significant funds by doing that. So Lisa is, actually, they're going to expose some lines tomorrow, and then Lisa's going to get the calculations to Travis, and hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have some numbers for you so that you can receive the exact amount. But I talked to Travis and Keith, and we all agree it's a great place to do our first project because it's wide open, it's our property, you don't have to be particularly neat because that area is going to get all, uh, tilled over anyway, so. Anyway, just, hopefully that'll go through like that, like we planned, and, uh, and then Lisa is working on the final numbers and some questions I have for the next phase. I think we're shooting for end of March, first April, shoot, wrong?
Yeah.
End of March, first April for the bids for that second part, which would be the two ball diamonds. And then Autumn Pino, the superintendent of the school, had reached out and wanted to check your availability for a joint city and school board meeting on Wednesday, March twenty-seventh. Is there a conflict with anyone for that? I'll get hold of Rick to see if he's available then. Good here? Last one, was it? Yeah, I'll go to here, yep.
March twenty-seventh?
I'll plan for seven, if it works for everybody.
He'll be here?
Yeah.
I think the last one was here, if I remember right, but maybe not for the, for the first one. Was it?
You weren't there. Kevin, do you have any conflicts? Uh, that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Working on the budget, and so I've got, that's enough right there.
Okay, for Christina. Counsel, Kevin?
Nothing.
Can't even tell us how nice Florida is?
I can't, but it did you guys just be mad, so.
That was, uh-
Amy and Sunny today.
Nate?
I don't have anything with me.
Mike?
Nothing.
John?
Thanks to Amy and Barb for all their years of service, and welcome to Elizabeth. Thank you for accepting the job. Also, thanks to the Historic Preservation Commission for all our countless hours of work, and thank you to all our volunteers and boards and commissions. That's what makes the community wonderful. That's all I have.
I really don't have anything. Elizabeth, you might hear some construction going on beside you?
That's me.
You'd be like you weren't in there yesterday, because it would have been really powder there. All right, that's it, meeting adjourned.